I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is a really fantastic thing. I think it looks like we're giving out money tonight. But I appreciate all you guys coming. We always like to have people packed here for our meetings. At this time, I'd like to give the superintendent a chance to introduce some of the people that he has from the student body to do some wonderful things for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance are two students representing the Culinary Arts Cafe. Morgan Bolton is a senior this year. He's a second-year student in the Culinary Arts Cafe. Morgan quickly became the go-to student for many stations and tasks in the cafe. He progressed as a culinary student and has shown extreme growth over two years. He always displays a positive attitude towards learning, follows sanitation and safety rules, and has exemplary employability skills. Morgan enjoys cooking at home and often tells us about his culinary adventures. Also with us tonight is Ryan Horan. Ryan joined us in the fall as a sophomore. Ryan excels in academic courses. He was recently recognized in the Science Fair. Ryan is a great example of our cafe students. He arrives early each day with a positive attitude, a willingness to achieve, and takes on each assignment with care. We look forward to seeing Ryan continue to grow in culinary arts. I'd like to invite Morgan and Ryan to join Chairman Espinola to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and remove your hats, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we'll call the meeting to order. Rule call, please.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Giggies?
Yeah.
Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Espinola?
Yeah, here.
No one, Mr. Chairman. No one has signed up.
We have no public appearances, Mr. Morin. Thank you very much. School Committee Communications? Nothing. And Report of Student Representative are esteemed student representative Gabriel Pena.
Yes, thank you. On April 26, 2018, 78 students attended the Skills USA Massachusetts State Leadership and Skills Conference held in Maribor. These students, representing all grade levels, participated in technical and leadership events. We are proud to announce that during the award ceremony on Saturday, April 28, 2018, 20 students received medals. Additionally, one GLT alumni received an award and one student was elected to the 2018-2019 State Executive Council. The following students received medals or awards. State Officer-elect Anthony Maliski. Gold Medalist Nicole Helms. Employment Application Process. Silver Medalists Isaac Nandre. Computer Programming Nicholas Fisher. Job Interview Jessica Palogios. With Model Malaysia Olivia. Aesthetics Anthony Matisia and Sophia Bronson. Web Design Ryan Gonzalez and Jeff Peroni. Additive Manufacturing Shane World. Corey Mack and Emma Corrigan. Engineering Technology. Bronze Medalists Cassandra Mendazi. Advertising Design. Andrew Sieg and Anthony Villa. Web Design Caitlin Jakes. Job Skills Demonstration A. Emily Tilson. Freshman Sticker Design. Sean Hall and Robert Bradbury. Additive Manufacturing. Alumni Service Award. Brady McCarron. Great Lowell Class of 2012 Office Business Technology Program Alumni. In addition, Great Lowell received several additional awards on April 27 at the end of Skills USA MA Chapter Excellence Recognition Celebration. Total Participation 100% Chapter Commune Coin. Skills USA Membership Award. Highest Membership in MA. Chapter Excellence Program Quality Chapter Award. Chapter Excellence Program Gold Level. Chapter of Distinction Award. A Leadership Excellence Award. State Conference Chaperones included Steve King, Brian Cornelia, Marion McKenna, Susan Ewens, Thomas Kolinsky Advisor, Guy Genjemi Advisor, Paul Pesky Advisor, Valerie Branko, Intern in Student Activities Coordinator. Skills USA Fast Cash Raffle Tickets will be on sale until Friday, May 11, 2018. Tickets can be purchased from any state conference participant or by emailing or calling Sharon Cornelia. Senior Prom is tomorrow, May 8, at the Boxborough Regency from 7:00 PM to 11:30 PM. There will be 530 students attending the prom this year. The Drama Club held their production of Sandbag: Stage Left or One Dead Dolly on May 3 and May 4. It was a huge success. The Drama Club would like to thank everyone for their support. The Freshman Class is planning a trip to the movies with Miss Alexander to go see The Avengers: Infinity War on May 16, 2018. Math Club held its first meet at Great Lowell on May 1, 2018. The event was well organized and ran smoothly. Seven schools participated with a total of 16 teams. Great Lowell performed well against other schools who participated. Staff that was involved in making this event a success includes Andre Collins, Nicole Guilford, and Linda Arsenal. Math coaches for the teams included Diane Cohen, Collette Williams, Karen Jackson, Elizabeth Austin, Joseph Nirvani, and Carolyn Discafini-Marot. Also, Juan Coca assisted with media. As for athletics, our boys volleyball team has played strong thus far, including wins over Great Lowell Rollins, Lowell Catholic, Pope John, and Mauden. The team will look to once again qualify for state tourney play this season. Baseball has already claimed wins over league rivals, Whittier and Shawshing, and will look to make a tourney push as we head into the second half of the season. Softball picked up a pair of wins over non-league opponents Watertown and Innovation Academy. The past two weeks will look to build off those as we head into May in a possible state tournament spot. Both girls and boys lacrosse have been working hard in the early season with the boys breaking into the win column against Minuteman on April 24 and the girls over in Neshoba Tech on April 26. Tennis continued their winning ways with their season and will look to capture a fourth straight regular season league title before hosting the CAC's Championships on May 29. The track team is off and running and looks to be one of the top programs in the CAC this year. The team also competed in the annual Haverhill Invitational on Saturday, April 14, and the D2 State Coaches Invitational on April 28. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Can I just say one thing?
You can say two if you want to.
I don't want to take anybody's time up, but it seems like it's been a wonderful spring here at Great Lowell Tech, you know, for 80 students to go down to the Skills USA and for 20 of them to medal. And one of our former alumni just speaks volumes for what this school can do. And then for our athletics, who's been really just growing rapidly. And of course, we have, you know, we have the prom coming up. And I just think this is really one big, great community that I think everybody really enjoys. So, um, thank you, you know, parents, and thank you for everyone that participates in this school because it really means a lot to us.
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you again, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Report of the minutes. Approval?
Go move. Second.
First by Mr.?
O'Hair.
Is that your name? O'Hair. Seconded by Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Report of the treasurer.
Motion to waive the reading.
Okay. Second. Motion by Mr. Booton. Second by Mr. Tatsias. Rule call, please.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Any reports of the General Counsel? This from the treasurer? Doesn't the treasurer do this? So we want to report that the motion to approve the expenditures for the sums of
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Mr. Bahu. Second by Mr. Morin.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Here. Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Report of the General Counsel. Is the General Counsel here, Mr. Superintendent?
Not here tonight. Nothing on the agenda.
We'll waive that. Next move is the report of the Superintendent Director. I move it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to invite Ms. Davis to after our first segment, recognition of the top 10 students.
Good evening. The top 10 has to come still here? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm honored to be here this evening to recognize the 10 outstanding students who have achieved academic and technical excellence and represent the core values of respect, effort, accountability, commitment, and honesty we have established here at Great Lowell Technical High School. I'd like to begin with Alvin Tran. Alvin is unable to be with us tonight, but I would still like to recognize Alvin. Alvin Tran is the son of Richard "Hi" Tran and Amy Simbadith of Lowell. Alvin is ranked 10th in the class of 2018. Alvin's technical program of study is engineering technology. Alvin's school activities include four years as a member of the Great Lowell Tennis Team, math club, Great Lowell Peer Tutor, Skills USA, and National Technical Honor Society. Alvin is the recipient of the following awards. Skills USA District Mobile Robotics 2nd Place. Skills USA District Megatronics 2nd Place. And Commonwealth Tennis 2016 Boys Doubles Runner-Up. Alvin is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Alvin plans to attend UMass Amherst and pursue a degree in computer science. He hopes to someday work for Google. The 10th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Alvin Tran. Peter Loy. Peter Loy is also unable to be with us this evening. Peter Loy is the son of Philip Loy and Julie Sock of Lowell. Peter is ranked 9th in the class of 2018. Peter's technical program is programming and web development. Peter participates in the Cooperative Education Program at Plum Choice as a technical support representative for the call center. Peter's school and community activities include National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, the Bay State Marathon, and Lowell General Hospital Teamwork for Cancer, volunteering as a fundraiser as well as a walker. Peter is the recipient of the following awards. Perfect Attendance grades 9 through 11. High Honor Roll. Skills USA Gold at this district level in 2017 for information technology services. And Skills USA Bronze at the district level in 2018 for information technology services. Peter is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He plans to attend Middlesex Community College to pursue a degree in cybersecurity before transferring to the University of Lowell to complete his four-year degree in cybersecurity. The number 9th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Peter Loy. Olivia Demirz. Olivia Demirz is the daughter of Roger and Debbie Demirz of Drakett. Olivia is ranked 8th in the class of 2018. Olivia's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is currently employed by Bay State Musculoskeletal Center as a chiropractor assistant. Olivia's school and community activities include JV and varsity volleyball, JV basketball, varsity lacrosse, Skills USA competitor, and 68 Hours of Hunger, volunteer coach for floor hockey, and Great Lowell Open House volunteer. Olivia is the recipient of the following awards. Perfect Attendance in the 9th grade. Coach's Award in the 9th grade. High Honor and Honor Roll grades 9 through 12 in Skills USA District Competitor. Civil Medalist 2018 in Medical Math, which earned her a place to continue to compete at the state level. Olivia is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in exercise physiology. Her future plans are to receive her doctoral degree in physical therapy. The number 8th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Olivia Demirz. Hanan Lam. Hanan Lam is the son of Ruli Lam and Ki Lam of Lowell. He is ranked 7th in the class of 2018. Hanan's technical program of study is programming and web development. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which has included several advanced placement courses. Hanan's school and community activities include peer tutor, Skills USA, math club, anime club, recycling club, pennies for patients, Thanksgiving for the homeless, Bay State Marathon volunteer, and empty bowl volunteer. Hanan is the recipient of the following awards. High Honor Roll. Perfect Attendance. And the English Award for Special Recognition in Grade 9. Hanan is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He plans to attend the University of Lowell to pursue a degree in mathematics. The number 7th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Haylen Lam. Rachel Cook. Rachel Cook is the daughter of Mark and Julie Cook of Tingsboro. Rachel is ranked 6th in the class of 2018. Rachel's technical program is culinary arts. Rachel has distinguished herself by participating in the Cooperative Education Program. She is currently employed by Mr. Max Restaurant located in Tingsboro. She has also worked to serve food for senior citizens at the Drakett Town Hall as a volunteer. Rachel has received the following awards. Outstanding Achievement in English for grades 9 and 10 and Outstanding Achievement in Health in Grade 9. Rachel is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in animation. Her future plans include working in the movie or video game industry with animation and to potentially be the creator of her own video game. The number 6th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Rachel Cook. Sylvia T. Sylvia is also unable to be here this evening. Sylvia T. is the daughter of Kang Yim of Lowell. Sylvia is ranked 5th in the class of 2018. Sylvia's technical program is programming and web development. Sylvia's school and community activities include Skills USA in Grade 10, Lowell General Hospital Teamwork for Cancer, and the City of Lights Parade Volunteer. Sylvia is the recipient of the following awards. High Honor Roll. Skills USA Civil Medal in Web Design in Grade 10 and Outstanding Shop Performance grades 10 and 11. Sylvia is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in psychology. Her future plans include a career in the counseling field. The number 5th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Sylvia T. Caitlin Jakes. Caitlin Jakes is the daughter of Heath Jakes and Nicole Rodriguez of Drakett. Caitlin is ranked 4th in the class of 2018. Caitlin's technical program is graphic communications. She participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is employed by Imperial Image working in graphic design. Caitlin's school and community activities include National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, Drama Club, and volunteering at her church. Caitlin is the recipient of the following awards. Skills USA Bronze in District and States in Graphics Textile. Skills USA First Place T-Shirt Design. Perfect Attendance Award. Math Competition Bronze Medal and Science Fair Bronze Medal. Caitlin is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, UMass Lowell Dean Scholarship, and the GCSF Scholarship. Caitlin plans to attend UMass Lowell for graphic design and business before she hopes someday to be the head of a marketing team, own her own business, and have two dogs. The number 4th-ranked student in the class of 2018, Caitlin Jakes. Hallie Bosia. Hallie Bosia is the daughter of Michael and Cheryl Bosia of Lowell. Hallie is ranked number 3 in the class of 2018. Hallie's technical program is design and visual communications. She participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is employed by Plum Choice as a graphic designer. Hallie is actively involved Hallie, I'm sorry, is actively involved in the following sports and activities. Varsity Soccer, Varsity Lacrosse, National Technical Honor Society, and Skills USA. Hallie also participates in the following volunteer and community service activities. Working with her church to build houses in Mississippi and working in the church garden and making soup for the homeless. Hallie is the recipient of the following awards. Varsity Soccer. Coach's Award. CAC Award. And Offensive MVP. Skills USA 2nd Place T-Shirt Design. Skills USA District Photography Competition. Hallie is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She plans to attend LaSalle College and major in forensic science before going on to pursue her master's degree in either forensic science or forensic psychology. The number 3rd-ranked student in the class of 2018, Hallie Bosia. Ginald Javier. Ginald Javier is the son of Ronaldo Javier and Janeth Millar of Drakett. Ginald is ranked 2nd and is the salutatorian of the class of 2018. Ginald's technical program is electronics technology. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes high honors and advanced placement courses. Ginald participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is employed by Watson Internet of Things, Maximo Asset Management Team, where he is an intern in the software engineering department working with cutting-edge technologies. Ginald is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, Student Council, Great Lowell Track Team, Skills USA, and the Great Lowell Swim Team, of which he is the captain. Ginald's community and volunteer activities include Great Lowell Peer Tutor and the ISK Wela Hung Filipino Cultural School Performing Ensemble, West Roxbury Church Youth Choir. Ginald is the recipient of the following awards. Swim and Dive Academic Excellence. MVP Swim. Outstanding Achievement in Math and Electronics. Skills USA District Bronze for Electronics. Ginald is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in electrical engineering before pursuing his master's in biomedical engineering. Ginald has been accepted at the University of Massachusetts Boston, the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and the University of Massachusetts Lowell. The number 2 ranked student and the salutatorian of the class of 2018, Ginald Javier. Rosario Pulio IV, otherwise known as Sonny, is the son of Rosario Pulio III of Lowell. Rosario is ranked number 1 and is the valedictorian of the class of 2018. Rosario's technical program is machine technology. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which has included high honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Rosario maintains a cooperative education position which he plans to continue after graduation at Spartan Technologies as a machinist. Rosario is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, the Great Lowell Music Club, and Skills USA. Rosario is also an active volunteer at St. Michael's Church as an altar server and special event guitarist. He also volunteers at St. Michael's School where he offers tutoring services in reading, math, and grammar. Rosario is the recipient of the following awards. Massachusetts Vocational Association Outstanding Vocational Technical Student Award for 2018. St. Michael's Principal Award in 2014. Gold Medal for CNC Turning in the Skills District Competition, which he earned his place to continue to compete at the state level. Outstanding Achievement in Machine Technology Award. World History Award. And the US History Award. Rosario is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to obtain a degree in mechanical engineering. Rosario hopes to also pursue a career in the United States Coast Guard. The number 1 ranked student and the valedictorian of the class of 2018, Rosario Pulio IV. Before you all go, I just want to say thank you again to all the parents here tonight for all your support over the years. You should be very proud of your children. We're also grateful to have, to work with parents like George for these last four years. So congratulations.
George, Paul. George.
So Freddie will need everybody's attorneys to sign their papers.
Thank you, everybody. Great job.
Seven, eight years from now, you can come back around for school committee and the FBI to congratulate the next batch.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You might be able to do more than one report.
Thank you. This is only the first.
And I was number 7.
Get excited about the prom.
Oh, yeah.
Get excited about it.
You did so late.
You did already?
You did already?
Can I just have, I just gotta have a minute? Can I just get a minute from the parents and the students?
Wait, Sonny, what's your awkward picture?
Just, just one minute?
Attention for a minute.
Good luck.
Can we get a minute? Can we get a minute? So just to say, to repeat some things, I'm a graduate from 1983 at this school. And when I graduated from this school, you could count the number of people that graduated and went on to college on one hand. And I often say this quite excitedly, that this isn't your grandfather's vocational school anymore. And due to a lot of part of the people at this table, we have done our best to try to get this place where that you don't lose, you gain by coming to a vocational technical high school. So all your support for the students and for the kids, we really appreciate it and we hope that you continue it moving forward. And thank you because the kids would not be the way that they are or where they are or the school wouldn't be where we are without your support and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good. Have a good time.
Did you set the record?
It'd be good.
I'm running D1 though.
Hey, listen, are you gonna change, like the last runner that went out bouncing a ball all the way, did you read, see that in the paper?
No, I didn't.
A runner, he's got a record running, but he was also carrying a ball and bouncing it as, as he was running.
Really?
Yeah, that was in the paper yesterday.
Yeah, you do need a separate one for each town.
Oh, so I shouldn't even sign this because I need to...
Oh, I have to go with George. Because when I was in the community, they told me it was all gonna be done.
Just because you're two months out.
They probably don't even know who's up.
So essentially, this is a sample.
This is a sample.
Congratulations, students, congratulations. Good job, Ariel.
Thanks, Sonny. Thanks, Sonny.
Mr. Moran, can I have your attention?
Yeah.
Thank you. Number two, Cooperative Education Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going forward, number two on the super test report is the Cooperative Education Report. I think you can see I want to highlight one item is the junior class, which is significant in terms of moving and trying to get a lot of our juniors into cooperative programs with the economy. I can tell you, just in the past couple of days, too, since the report was put together, we're getting some, some really interesting calls to start integrating some of the kids with these experiences. So I commend Ms. Bazanzin for moving forward with this. I know, you know, the committee had this as an important endeavor earlier, so we continue to thank you for your support on this. Item number three, four, five, and six all require votes from this committee. First, approval of the 2018-19 school calendar. I do want to highlight that the calendar in the book had a few typos, so Cheryl was kind enough to complete a clean copy, which is loose on your desk. It's loose on your desk. So this calendar mirrors the calendar we've had this year. It also mirrors the calendar from last year. There may be some slight changes with some potential MCAS dates and such, but other than that, the full holidays and some of the key components and ceremonies that we have in our school are reflected there.
Mr. Bahu?
Motion to approve.
Hold on a second, Mr. Booton has a conversation.
That was seconding it. I was making a motion.
Just one question for me.
Yes.
How are we doing with the days, the snow days? We okay with all that?
Yeah, for this, this school year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fine. We've met, obviously, the 990-hour requirement. Our last day of school is June 22nd. That's been pretty stated for a while out there. We don't anticipate any issues. I know we're not probably having some of the issues that other schools have had. That's due to the fact that I think that back in October when we had the power issues, we were back to school on the day and some other schools took three to four days to get out. So June 22nd is our last day of school of instruction here in the building and obviously we've met all the requirements.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Booton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Next item is the school choice vote. As you know, you're experienced committee, this is a normal vote for this time of year to approve school choice in the district.
Motion to approve by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Tatsias. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Next is a donation. There's a memo in your packet from Athletic Director White for a line, lane line rail and lane lines for the pool. Expected value, approximate value is 1,500. The donation is from the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell.
So is that donating to us?
Yes, we're accepting, we're accepting a donation.
Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded.
Second.
Mr. O'Hare?
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yep.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Last item for a vote, as we all know, due to the good success of our students in the Skills USA Competition State Conference, which we've had a couple of weeks ago. National Conference takes place June 25th to 30th in Louisville, Kentucky. We need approval for out-of-state travel for the following individuals. As you can see on your memo, it's loose on your table. The advisor, Sharon Cornelia, teacher, Guy Gengemi, student, Nicole Helms, Evan Bladus, Stephen King, faculty, Isaac Nadro, student, Anthony Malisi, and Kenny Dela Cruz. Put an estimated cost there for you to see. That's are gonna be our potential cost for our competition in Louisville.
What line item or what account does that come out of?
That's a great question. We, we did not have a line item set up for this account in the past. We're gonna have to identify a line item. I can tell you, obviously, we do have the funding to be able to send the students there. I think in the, in the future, we gotta be a little bit more savvy in terms of finding a line item and anticipating the good fortune and good work of our students. At this amount, and some smaller amounts for the state, the state mainly buses, have to be budgeted on a yearly basis. So I can tell you that we'll probably make an adjustment going forward in the line item to incorporate somewhere in the range of about 25,000 for Skills USA as a main item in the budget.
Thank you.
Superintendent, is, do you anticipate enough coverage with chaperones or is, because we want to make sure that there are enough chaperones and...
Yeah, it's a good question.
You don't want to hold back on coverage?
Actually, that's a great, actually, I added one person anticipating that that was gonna be an issue. So initially, they had one less person, so as a good suggestion of Ms. Davis, we added another person to go, so I'm comfortable with that. Two of these students also have been at a national conference before, too, so.
Right, motion to approve. Curtis Lemay, seconded by...
Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. O'Hare?
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, report of the business manager, please?
Anything? There's no reports and I asked the business, there's really nothing that was vital, so I asked the business manager to prepare some of the things that we need that were from the last meeting for June. We need to get some more information specifically about the, um, dropped my mind.
Construction project?
No. It'll come to me, I'm sorry.
Send us an email tomorrow?
No, it was the OPEB, the OPEB vote, when we were working on that last time, yeah.
Well, we thank you for granting us your presence anyways. Old business? Anybody want to talk about some old business? Mr. Booton?
Can we please remove item number eight? The superintendent provided a great report. Think we can take that off the old business?
Motion by Mr. Booton to take it off. You sure?
No objections?
Yeah, because it's his motion.
Okay.
George.
Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. O'Hare?
Just wanted to point out that we had some long-positioned items that were coming up. For example, a dedication for Mr. Cool Harris in the building. Also, a couple of facilities around the gym which would give more visual opportunities to see some of the awards. The Cool Harris position is after a long period of time. People who were in Africa and Europe and Greece and everything before they got back and to settle this. And this should take place within the next two weeks, three weeks, so.
Sorry, isn't there a date?
Yes, there is a date.
21st?
Yeah.
So May 21st, for the people at home watching, May 21st, Mr. George Cool Harris, the gymnasium will be dedicated to his honor at 11:30 a.m. If anybody would like to attend, free and open to everybody in the public. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, move on to new business. Any new business? Mr. Booton?
I do have a question for the superintendent. Any word from the state as far as budget, if we're gonna be receiving any more funds?
Yes, today, the Senate just passed something. Senate came out today. With the Senate budget, our Chapter 70 allocation costs for $250,000 more than the House and the governor's budget. As you know, you've been through this before, there's usually a debate now between the House, Senate, governor gets the veto. That would be significant for us, obviously, in range. The other thing I'm hearing is that transportation's gonna be funded most likely higher than last year, and that would also help us immensely with our transportation. We're at about 72.5%. Some quick calculations just came out today, it looks like it'll be closer to the 75, maybe 76 range. So that will help us, as you know, our transportation is well over in the million dollars a year. So that will help us. There are some other smaller items within the Senate budget that may help us in terms of some of the entitlement grants, but I think the key thing is the Chapter 70.
Mr. Boot?
Any of the 250s approved, are you, are you starting to look at places where capital improvements for that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a few things. One is gonna be Skills USA, you know, that would be one, that'd be one of the first spots to be earmarked. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a few capital projects going on. I think we'll have a full financial at the end of June, you know, which we usually do, as you can see there, of closing out. I, I think we're very much on target in terms of managing this year's budget and closing out the budget, meeting net school spending without a doubt, and being able to take care of some things that we need to take care of. Some of the major capital projects that, you know, we've been working on have come to fruition, which we've done a good job with. I do think that one item that we may look at is to spend some time in the artisan and see if we can upgrade that a little bit with lighting, and we've got some bids on that already, to get a feel for what that may cost us with potential monies from this year. We budget a little bit, as you know, in the budget for next year for, for the restaurant. That's a target area. And then if we can look at some things that we can do in June that may help us with next year's budget, that's something that we're always looking at also.
I'm just, I'm hoping we're not in a situation like we were a few years ago where the 30th, all of a sudden, they gave us money and we couldn't do anything with it, so, good.
Superintendent, what specifically are we looking at relative to the lighting in the restaurant?
There's a couple different areas, there's about five different areas, two we can't do. Yeah, well, it's, you know, the lighting is, is the, with the drop ceiling, really it's not conducive to the restaurant, so we're looking to maybe dress it up a little bit with some lamps, some lamp lighting, and make it look like a restaurant. I know that we've had a consultant in, not a paid consultant, from the Restaurant Association to kind of give us some feedback what that would look like. The flooring, even though the, the carpet's new, we like to do something a little bit different to make it more of a tile wood flooring. We really want to dress it up a little bit. The lighting's a key component. The paint, painting the walls is vital to dress that area up a little bit, some small areas in the reception area, but also the divider, which is something we're gonna have to do in the future. It's easy to get the same type of divider, but it's not gonna be conducive to what we want. We're looking at more of a glass sliding divider that would really dress up both areas that could open up a full restaurant and really get, market that, that area better. Many of you have been in there. But also close it off and to continue with some of the conferences that we've been doing with the outside agencies, some of the banquet, if you want to call it, and getting our hospitality kids involved with that. So that's another component. And then there's some buffet-type things in terms of restaurant management that we need to do and that will come in over time. So, you know, we, we've hit, as you know, most of, most of the building pretty well, you know, maintaining it and maintaining the investment is, you know, stewardship that I have to continue with. Obviously, you know Mark and he does a good job and we continue to look at these items and keep our investment in the right movement. But, you know, we, we really gotta look at upgrading also some of those areas, specifically the restaurant. As you know, from the budget, you have major painting this year, we're doing a lot of the building in the summer, some of the summer projects. That might be a good project for me to give you, give you an update of what we're doing all summer, so you can get to see that. I'll try to have that the next meeting, I'll have a report for you, you can see that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatsias?
The portable lighting for fields, have we made any?
No, waiting for the budget to get approved. As you know, we've, we've put that into the budget, the portable lighting for, to be able to do that. So, you know, obviously, next week is Dunstable, Monday night, Tinsborough, Tuesday night, Drakeett's, June 4th. Lowell will be in late June once everything's approved, we're ready to go.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah, I just want to point out something that was very, very impressive. I think it was last week, something happened at the school with an issue, and all the students and instructors were all brought out, out of the building. In a, in a situation that you wouldn't realize, you would think it was a practice, it was a perfect demonstration. There was somebody that was hurt one way or another, ambulances were there, fire trucks were there from the various communities, and the, the, the operation was one of those things that you didn't have to go chasing for students, they just marched out all the way in green space, on stairs, everything. And I really, you, and we hear too many, too much about things like this, that when something happens, people start to panic or might, you know, very, very nervous, et cetera, but this was a perfect example of, of students listening to their instructors and doing exactly what you would expect of them to do. Have to give compliments to all those instructors that really got those kids where they should belong, uh, during that fire, quote, fire drill. And it was not a fire drill, it was a live action. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'd just like to go back to the transportation budget. Um, Mr. Moran and myself have been, uh, to a couple of meetings where the people in the State House are really, really fighting to bring that transportation budget back to where it should be. I remember I've been on this board when it's been fifty, fifty-seven, sixty-two, and maybe a little higher than sixties, and then we got some money extra one time when we, when we, uh, um, replenished, uh, some money back to the cities and towns. Um, but they are really fighting, uh, the people on the, on the educational budget committees for the House and the Senate, um, whether they be Democrats or Republicans, they're really, they really know that it, it really takes a big, big chunk out of the budget of these cities and towns, so they, they realize it, and, and I appreciated the fact that it, it's going up and up and up and up, and, and we have a governor that is in office right now who appreciates, uh, technical education, so hopefully it continues to move forward like that. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to mention that, uh, as you know, you know, the subcommittee met over the, uh, appointment of, uh, new attorneys, and, uh, that I have discussed that, and, uh, uh, I've contacted, uh, half a dozen different law firms, and, uh, we have received information from them, and that, uh, you know, get together with the subcommittee to see if we can move forward on that.
Okay, appreciate that, Mr. Moran, thank you. Now we have, uh, motions by our committee people, a motion by Mr. Bahu to have the superintendent research the probability of adding modular classrooms to the campus to develop comprehensive academic programs at Greater Lowell Technical High School. Mr. Bahu?
Okay, uh, yep, this is, uh, this is a motion that, uh...
Ray, you second it?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a motion that, uh, for some consideration, um, to, you know, look into the feasibility of doing this. I, um, I know that there are a number of schools, public schools out there, that offer not just comprehensive education, but they also offer vocational education, and some of them are where Mr. Master Cola came from, uh, Peabody, uh, another one is Gloucester, uh, another one is Malden. Now, I also know that we have more students in this building than we've ever had before, and we can't take in any more vocational programming. But I also know that we have over a thousand applications in this year, and we can only take in about six-hundred-and-fifty students, and that's on the high side. So, not that students want to come here for comprehensive education, but I also know that there is a major league building project going on in the town that I reside in, Lowell, Massachusetts. So, um, I'd like to sort of have the superintendent look into creating an academic program here at the school, um, with modular classrooms, um, and he could sort of come up with his own idea. I don't want to take up the campus with modular classrooms, I realize there's soccer, I realize there's lacrosse and baseball and such like that. Um, however, I feel like there is a need at this time for some type of, um, academic programming to maybe get away from certain, um, building projects that are going on, and, uh, to give people a, uh, strong learning environment that is away from any, um, confusion, if you will. So, that's my thought process, I don't know if anybody has any questions about it.
Any conversations? Mr. Booton?
I, I know you're asking for a report on it, this may come in the report, but, um, so would we get chapter seventy funds for those students, but we wouldn't get the, um, current?
We wouldn't get the vocational. We wouldn't get the vocational reimbursement, we would get the academic.
Similar to what a charter school would get for each student that came here?
Charter school or a local public school.
Interesting, thank you.
All right, if I'm reading this correctly, we're going to take some of the burden off of Lowell High while we're under renovation, is that the purpose of this?
It's not about taking the burden off of Lowell High, it's giving people an opportunity to come, students an opportunity to come to this school.
Strictly as comprehensive?
Comprehensive. Now, don't forget, there's also the, the other option, because sometimes students want to come in here into the vocational programming, and if they were in the modular classrooms and they were in an academic program, as students began to leave, because sometimes they decide that they're not going to come here the freshman year, or, or they're just saying, hey, this is not fitting well for me, I'm going to go to Drake at High instead, they would already have seats at the modular classroom, so they may say, hey, listen, I'd rather get into a vocational type of exploration more than I want to be in the programming. So they would sort of already be here and know the teachers and know what happens here at Greater Lowell Tech, and they may be able to sort of move from one
Okay.
program to another. Just a thought, I don't know, I, I don't know if this is, if this is even done across the state, I think
Thinking out of the box.
The first one, uh, but I think it's something worth researching, especially in light of all of the renovations that's going to be happening, uh, in Lowell.
We've always talked as a board that we knew that there was going to be some need to take some kids that are displaced as a result of what's going on in, in, uh, in Lowell, uh, I, I think it's a good motion, Mr. Bahu. Mr. O'Hair, you, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just, I think it's a good motion. Uh, I've noticed that we, I don't know where we are with some of the buildings here, but there was a move to make some, one was going to be a new, so, one of our buildings was going to be a solar, solar-equipped building, and I don't know where that stands, and another building that's out back, uh, we getting the, uh, that was used for something else at one time, I don't know what it was, but are we getting the bested?
Use?
Yeah, use out of this, and that would be an ideal spot. I travels, I'm traveling around, I happen to go by, I, you know, I'm from Lowell, and a lot of people are complaining about modular schools, et cetera, but I happen to go by, I took the wrong turn, I went by Innovation Academy. There, I don't know how many modular schools are there, there are many of them, and they look perfect, they look perfect in the environment that is set up. So if we could do that, that would be interesting, and very successful, I hope, but we got to be very, very careful of how we get money and where we get the money from.
I agree. Mr. Tatzias?
Yeah. Is, I'm thinking of it more.
The Innovations is one of what, four high schools in your town?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you, you have a personal interest.
One of my sons is there, yeah.
The buildings that we were building every year, two buildings, and then the more, I mean, I don't know if it's feasible, but it's a thought, build one or two modular classrooms a year.
You could definitely make the modular classroom look like a permanent building without, with minimum, um, additions to it like they do with Innovations, that that whole left, right side is all, um, modular classrooms, and it looks like it's permanent.
Yeah.
Without the trailers of old.
Yeah, they're not.
I mean, even if, i- i- and after several years, we had to demo them, I mean, we were building two houses a year, demoing them, and nobody got any use out of them, uh, it's a, it's a thought, I mean, I don't know if it's feasible, you know, financially, but...
Exactly. You would like to say something? Are you looking long-term in, in reference to this?
Well, I, I would think that, you know, this is something that we have, if we're considering it and for the superintendent to look into it, that, you know, we would think of this as long-term, and we would see how it works, we would see what type of enrollment that we get, and see if the enrollment is constant, or see if it begins to, you know, increase or decrease over a period of time, and if it decreases, then it may be something that another school committee may have to say, well, this program isn't working for us, and the, uh, this might be something that we will, we may want to get away from.
Well, I'd look forward to the report, I, I just, uh, I don't want to bite off more than we can chew as far as what we might be looking for.
Sure.
In totality, as far as, uh, how many units, um, only because I don't, I don't see any money in the horizon for the units in question. You, you think there'd be funding for those?
I, I'm pretty sure there would be.
And if it's going to be multi-year, I mean, uh, as George would know, infrastructure, there'd have to be sorridge, there'd have to be, there's, there's some work there, so there's some
There's some questions to be had.
Financial things to look at. There's definitely going to be an investment involved in it. Right, if we're going to do it. Yeah, and it's, and it's also, we have to look at it as, this is the way I look at it, I'm off from the district that we know is going to have a problem, but we know they're going to have a problem, and if we all think about kids, uh, and children and students, um, and parents wondering if they need to send their kids somewhere else to a school where they're going to have to pay thousands of dollars to go to a school, I mean, I, I appreciate just that part of the motion, I do. Mr. Giggie?
My concern would be, would we be deviating from the mission of our vocational education by going to this comprehensive modular school, because that's the educational side? And I think our, I as a committee member, I want to make sure that this school is the best vocational school in the state, I want to maintain that reputation and build it, they will come, and then we want to be able to allow as many people in as possible. I just would hope that, and again, that there would not be a deviation from the mission of this school, and that's the only caution that I would have going forward. Thinking outside the box is a positive thing, it helps move things in a, in a positive direction generally, but we also got to be cognizant of the fact that the superintendent has a full-time job with what he's got to carry just for this institution, and then if you're looking outside, it, it can be a challenge sometimes. So I don't know how far you want to go. I think it's a great suggestion, maybe we can get some input from the superintendent on how much time it would require to kind of look into this.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
So, you know, so I, I realize, I mean, we do want to be the number one vocational school in the state, and I believe that we are going in that direction. I also know that the state says we can't add any more space in this building because of the way that it's built, therefore, we cannot add any more type of, uh, vocational programming, as far as I know, and it's all, it's all based on square footage, and we've had this discussion before. And I know we don't want to deviate at all from what's happening here. I think I, what I want to add, and of course, you always start small, there's no way to say, okay, let's take in four hundred students, because that's not even something to consider. Um, this could be, you know, um, one modular, one modular building, which you can rent or you can purchase, I'm going to guess we would rent it.
Or build.
Yeah, or build it, okay, but one modular building, um, holds, has two classrooms, and each classroom holds as many as twenty-five students. So we could start at the smallest of smalls, um, and go that direction, it would take simply fifty for an academic high school. Um, however, I also, you know, want to add in that as years progress, as a student, you know, um, moves his, his time here at Greater Lowell Tech, we take in approximately six-hundred-and-twenty-five students or six-hundred-and-thirty-five students, but by the time we get to the graduating class, we're graduating like five-hundred-and-sixty-five or five-hundred-and-seventy-five. So we have room, and we cannot take any students in their junior year or their senior year because they have to take a three-year program. With that being the case, there's room in the academic classrooms, so they could sort of leave the modular classrooms after two years, the freshman and the sophomore year, and then come into the building that it is and still have room, um, um, in this building where we wouldn't have to have juniors and seniors in the modular classrooms, it would just be a sort of a growth process. And I do want to share something really that's very important and personal to me. Um, I was in Lowell High School in nineteen-eighty, in nineteen-seventy-nine, and nineteen-seventy-eight, and I remember when they were building the Lowell Building, and I remember the pounding that was going on in that building, and, and the construction that was going on there, and the dust that was going on there, but mostly I remember the pounding and the ledge, and I remember how it affected the concentration level that I had. So, and I know that a lot of parents may be thinking that as well, you know, what's it going to be like with my child being at a construction site for, four years? Um, you know, and, and I just want to sort of address that, and I think we have an opportunity here, and it's nothing that's done across the state, and can it be done? I don't know. However, is it worth looking into? I think it does definitely have some merit.
I, I agree with you, but I think there's another thing that we haven't mentioned. I think some people realize at least Greater Lowell is doing very well, uh, maybe some other schools are doing the same, uh, the same, and let's say that they are, and there are some people that are just, uh, they, for no other reason than they get in classrooms, more classrooms, you keep kids in your area, your city or town, and I'm not too sure that's a good reason for, um, letting some of the, um, uh, regular schools, uh, go after that money to have a modular school take place. Are we do, are we doing a good job? Well, our statistics are telling us we are doing a good job. You know, some kids don't have the same abilities of others, but still, we, um, I think we have to look at MCAS, make sure that these kids are passing, that's another little issue that takes place. I, everything seems to be going well, and I, I have a hard time feeling, a hard time imagining that people, uh, principals, superintendents are going to be pushing to take some of that, uh, schooling, some of those children, and put it in something smaller, not so much larger, because, you know, we're at a regular size, but I, I, I think people should, whoever is handing out the money to make this, these, this successful, to evaluate who is doing a good job passing MCAS, and we had, we were in a situation at one time, we didn't know what MCAS was, and we had to get into that bandwagon and make sure our students are, are passing. We have everything working right now, and I hope it stays that way regardless of who is trying to move in as a technical, and make this partially, or make their school partially a technical school.
It's just a motion to look at the report, to see if the feasibility, Mr. Booton?
Yeah, I just want to, Mr. Master Cola, my kids had gone to the Innovation Academy, at least a couple of them, they started off with, I think, twenty-five or thirty kids per class when they started the high school, my daughter was actually the first graduating class from there, so I think Mr. Bahu's motion, um, is great, we're getting information, something to consider if it's going to benefit kids, um, but as, as you're going forward, they started off at thirty, now they're up to a hundred per class, um, over the past ten years, so, thank you.
And it's important to notice, to note, this is temporary, it's, it's, it's definitely a way for somebody that is in the school system in Lowell, that they could send their kids here instead of carving a path to send their kids outside of Lowell to other schools, and then when all the banging and the dust is settled, they can send the rest of their families, uh, to the school system, so we might be doing a service to the school system in Lowell by just having a place down the street temporarily, and then once everything's all set, which is, looks like it's going to be ten years, uh, a sort of a project, and, uh, so I think if we look at it temporary, we'll be all set. Mr. Moran?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I think if the superintendent could take it under advisement, do some research, I really don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. I'd have a vote. Zero vote.
No, we're just voting on him, we're just voting on the superintendent to get some information.
All right. Mr. Tatzias?
Not having thought about this at all before, the more I think about it, it, it does have some, um, merits and some possibilities, I mean, if we were to take kids that were on our waiting list, is that what you're proposing? Say we're talking fifty kids?
Not necessarily.
Let's be real here, if, 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 if we're going to start an academic high school?
Right.
Um, they would have to know that they're putting in for the academic high school, not putting in for the vocational high school.
I, I understand, but we're turning down
Sure, so we could
We teach kids every year.
We could give them, we could send them the letter that says, well, we can't take you into the vocational program, however, we do have
They would be in the wings should there be an opening. They would be in the wings should there be an opening.
That's correct, because they would be used to what's going on.
And I've always advocated this.
Is that coming this way?
This school spends a lot of money per student. And I think we offer a lot. And if kids knew that there was somebody out there waiting for their seat, maybe they'd be a little more attentive. And not that they aren't, all, I mean, we just saw ten wonderful kids here tonight. But there are seats being wasted in this school. I would like to see kids, all the kids here, that really wanted to be here and wanted to take advantage of what's being offered. And if we had the kids on a waiting list here...
So the curriculum would be to be determined, so I don't think anybody should get concerned about what they're gonna teach.
Sure, it's gonna really have the superintendent look into the research, even if the state would accept something like that.
It might be cost prohibitive after the superintendent works the numbers out where you need temporary superintendent, you need temporary teachers, you need temporary, whatever, how long's it last?
You can take a look into that.
For that, Mr. Giggie?
Yeah, just briefly, I don't know if you can transfer from the academic side into the technical side, because the freshmen are required to attend certain shops and then make their selection down the road. And so they're not getting...
Up until the sophomore year.
Up until, but they're attending shops, they're going to different...
Exploration.
Exploration. And if you're just in the comprehensive side, I don't know how you can cross over into the technical side.
Don't we allow kids to come in?
Yeah, it's not a requirement.
If we have an opening?
If there's an opening in sophomore...
Sophomore year, it comes down to if there's six openings in a certain shop and a kid wants to come in from Lowell High School or Drake at High School or one of our sending communities and...
And he wants to go to that shop.
And, well, yeah, that's correct. He says he wants to go to Great Lowell Tech, we're gonna say, well, there's no room in carpentry, but there is room in this one particular shop. If you wanna be in that shop, you can be in that shop. That's how that works.
First choice to come here as a comprehensive student, they would be, you know, then if there was an opening, they would already be, they may come and be involved with the kids here and find out they don't like it too. I mean, but why not let them, you know, experience the vocational school atmosphere at least?
I think just having all the kids in every area just walk through this school, I think they'd be just happy to do it. Because I think this campus is just amazing. When you, when you, when you walk around here, it's just a fantastic place.
Sure.
So, anybody have enough discussion? I think we've got some good fodder going on. And having all the discussion been heard, Mr. Booton, do you still want to second the motion?
Absolutely. Why, you wanna take it? No, I'd like, I'd definitely like to get a report on it, I think it's really interesting.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes. Are there any more reports of subcommittees, Mr. Moran had?
I think I might have jumped ship earlier when I talked about that. But it's, like I said, I believe we have six or seven. I came here, sat down with the superintendent, contacted, but we had boiled down to, you know, law firms and I personally spoke to someone there. And they have sent back their feedback. And if I can get together with you and Mr. Booton for a few minutes, we can discuss how we can move forward on this, because we have to move forward soon.
Right.
All right.
Mr. Bahu, was that your report from the subcommittee meeting, Mr. Moran?
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'd like to second, I just, I read this yesterday and I just noticed today, there's a small typo, second last line. Mr. Moran and Mr. Mastercoler will contact to stop choices. I believe that should just be topped, so if we could just change that in a minute.
Yeah, top choice, yeah, we did do that, but...
Top, okay, got it.
Mr. Mastercoler was in, and I was sitting in a conference room, an open mic. And I spoke to, and those that couldn't get back to me at that present time did contact me personally. We did have one law firm that also does Dunstable. And I saw some conflict there and I just said, you know, that I felt that, thank you for your interest, but I'm on with that.
So, as far as subcommittees are concerned, too, we get this that we're gonna vote on in a second. I'm gonna leave all the subcommittees as they stand right now. Does anybody want to be moved off or onto a committee that they're not on right now? I think it's pretty spread out fairly. And we will be, I will be asking for volunteers to go on to a building and grounds improvement subcommittee so that we can work closely with the superintendent and the building superintendent to move that project forward with our baseball fields and softball fields and the lights and the football. So I'll be proposing that in the near future, if anybody's interested in getting on to that. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna live itself to be a good opportunity to bring this place into a new level of education. I really believe that. So we have this motion and seconded by Mr. Booton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Hold on, Mr. Booton?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. Seconded by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
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 Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.